Jim.
What?
I'm sorry, can you approve some of Jim's?
Yes, I can.
In a moment. Oh.
No, we have them.
Just recycling the last week. Were you, were you there for that?
He doesn't want to kill trees on this.
Did you buy tech beat? Are you going to say this by tech we last spoken?
Yeah. Say it again.
By tech we last spoken?
I know.
I want.
I'd like to call this regular Board of Selectmen meeting to order Tuesday, April 4th, 2023. And I actually should do the hybrid thing first, but we all jumped up, so let's. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a virtual hybrid and in-person meeting. Behave yourself, behave yourselves, or we'll ask you to leave. And we will watch, monitor for comments during. Audience citizens, and we'll check in the chat periodically, so thank you. That is good. Approval of the agenda. I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented. Anything else to add, take out, anybody good?
Yeah.
Just a few additions on my report, but you know, you can change your check.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, thank you. I did approval of the minutes, I move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes for March 21, 23.
Okay, we got one, same thing, I don't know what it could be.
A discussion?
No. It's in there, there's corrections.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Audience of citizens. Open sound. Is it, do you have a comment? Say your name, you have a comment?
We're saying.
Okay, old business, review and discuss the Board of Selectmen budget. So last week, Five Pack, Five Pack asked that the Board of Selectmen cut $100,000 from their budget. So I had a little discussion with them. Actually had a statement for them in the bottom line was, if you feel that's your job to ask us to cut the budget, you've accomplished that, you've asked. And the truth of the matter is, we don't, I don't feel that we put work, any fluff in our budget. However, if, if, if they want us to cut $100,000 out of it, I have talked with Mark and I've discussed it with Beth two weeks ago. So I know where I would take the money from. And if you'd like, I'll share it with you, and then if you have ideas, it's not just me, we'll talk about it. So we are putting $200,000 from the Hop River project into the Culver Fund. The perfect, Hop River Bridge project. And so we're moving that over for engineering costs as we go forward for Congress. I also asked, and we agreed, to put $125,000 into that fund to start building it up. Because we have Culvers in town that are going to need engineering plus repairs in the future. So. My recommendation is to put off the $100,000 of the 125. Take that out of our budget. I would not keep the 25 in the Culver position. Because $25,000 really doesn't do much for us there. In talking with Beth, we asked for money for the new chip seal processing for some of the roads in town. She said, and we approved it, she also told me, as I was asking and looking for facts to be able to make a presentation. So we get more chip seal, the more money we allocate for that, which means we'll get $100,000 worth of chip seal stuff at 100,000. But if we go to 125, we could get $140,000 worth of material. The more you buy, the better deal you get.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's what I'm saying.
So, so the bottom line is, I'm asking if we want to take the 100,000 out of the Culver 125, take the 100,000, move the 25 over to the chip seal road overlayment to save the roads. So that's my idea. Anybody else have any ideas? I don't want to take it from the firehouse fund, fireman's fund. I think it's still very smart, we're allocating money for putting away for when we need new vehicles. And really, there's not a lot of fluff anywhere else.
So question on the Culver. So my recollection was, we were trying to be ready in case we got some approvals, right? So I know we'll still have some in there, so as a thought, then we would just have to go to a town meeting to appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like.
Then. Believe me, I looked at a lot of different departments. I looked at DPW, looked at everything over there, DPW, and there's not a lot there. I had the library come in, we looked at theirs based on Christopher's analysis from a couple of weeks ago. I took another look at that, and we had a very frank conversation, I was very pleased at the library. Sue and Denise came in and showed me some things, and we talked about where the library is at, and some of their revenue, and some of their expenditure. It's funny, about 90% of their costs are fixed costs, and the other 10%, there's probably 7% of that, that is energy and, you know, just things, it's very tough to deal with things. So I was pleased with the frank discussion that we had. And I really think that this is the only area that I am very comfortable having to pull money and move it around a little bit.
Makes sense.
But I will tell you in no uncertain terms, I told Five Pack I was not pleased with their decision to arbitrarily throw a, cut 100,000 where, not just, you know, that type of thing, so. Because unlike the board event, and unlike the library, and unlike, you know, places, they tell us where we can spend our money. When we submit our budget, that is our budget, and that's our line items, and we have to jump through hoops to move it around if we have to. So without a clear cut, this is where we want you to cut, this is where we think that you can save. Kind of, I didn't appreciate it. I understand they have a job to do, sort of, but I didn't appreciate, that's too much to Peter probably start over a bunch of. Yeah. So. Anybody else, I know I'm springing on you, have any ideas?
With your proposal.
Yeah, that makes sense, great.
I was thinking it would need to be on that caption.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Well.
And I had, yeah, you studied it longer than I did.
Do we need a motion, or we just do it?
I think we probably need a motion. So I make a motion that we decrease our Board of Selectmen budget by $100,000 from the Culver Fund, the newly approved Culver Fund, and move 100, excuse me, move 25,000 from that same fund to the chip seal road, road. Reception, reception. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Why is audience a citizen there? Okay. Oh, never mind, yeah. Discussion set a time, the, okay. Of course, new business, discussion, and to set a town meeting for an allocation of funds to, the capital, for the engineering design costs and electrical upgrades for the Porter School A-Wing HVAC project. Okay. I am, I am really still at a loss, I don't, I mean, I know we are probably going to have to upgrade our electrical panel over there. No matter what we do, correct, Chris?
Chris, I mean, if we don't do anything with HVAC and it's more buildings, you know, drainage, whatever, I don't think you'd have to upgrade. But eventually you will, if you do any, any upgrades, just because of the way they had to, as I understand, to address the solar panels they needed to give the step down or whatever the rate term is from like 1200 to 600. An answer, so, yeah.
Yeah. And the other thing is, this is covered, should we get the grant? This is in the grant proposal, it's part of that remodeling or modification over there for the air circulation stuff, so. Unless we find out otherwise, we can set a town meeting for allocation of funds. And if it doesn't come through, we still falls under, we're back at.
I'll do 1.8. If we, if we get the grant, we have 100, 1.89. We don't get the grant, that's why you would need to allocate the budget to keep going.
Yeah. But in the end, if we find a better solution that doesn't call, call for that, we can move the line back. Any other discussion, questions?
So what, what's the market's going in here?
That's what we have. Well, I know that the, the building committee said 400,000 plus 150 for, you know, wiring and stuff, so. Ernie has asked for.
People over 500,000, you have to have a record on.
Thank, he's asked for 499,000.
Ernie?
He wanted 550, I'm not going.
He was just throwing numbers out when he was doing his analysis.
That's people be confusing for a puppy.
Right, it will be.
So this is for the engineering and designing?
It's.
The electrical.
No, electrical.
The electrical, okay.
Good question, thanks.
It was estimated about 300.
300.
So most of that's.
200, so it's probably around 450 maybe, that's at least a start. 450 to 450.
I'm gonna ask for 499, so we don't keep going, and then go, and then go, and now we need to know 12,000, now we need to know 15,000. We're gonna, whatever happens, we're gonna keep good eye on every, any of this project, because then they could all roll back into the jungle. Right. So.
So it's for the design, engineering design, and for the electrical, okay?
Discussion, Chris, you have anything, you okay with that? You're, you're in those talks more than I've been, so we appreciate that.
A little bit.
So. So I make a motion, there, you know, I make a motion, we allocate the 499,000 to the capital for engineering and design costs, and electrical upgrades for the Porter School A-Wing HVAC project.
So we send this out town meeting, not to allocate it?
Yeah, set a town meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks for the call. Oh, you have the phone, yeah, okay. Okay, motions, I'll amend my motion. A motion to set a town meeting for the appropriation of 499,000 for the general fund to capital project. HWP HVAC improvements number 20-6206-015 for engineering design cost of the Porter School A-Wing HVAC project, as well as have funding to cover the cost of the electrical upgrade needed for this project.
Do you want to be that specific to electrical upgrade, just in case you have to do some grading?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say to you, want a new, you could, indoor air quality improvement project?
That's perfect.
That's kind of like what your, you want, is.
So I'm gonna. Cut away.
Cover's it all.
My motion, can you tell me what the same was? Well, I would just say it's great, but just on electrical upgrade to what you've recommended, Chris?
No, I was gonna suggest go in air quality improvements. Or it just remove HVAC project, right, because we don't know if it's HVAC, just substitute indoor air quality improvement project.
A-Wing.
Air quality.
Indoor air quality.
Indoor. Improvement.
But then you have, you haven't defined exactly how you're gonna spend it, it's just for the air.
Air quality improvement project?
Yep.
Air quality improvement.
So A-Wing indoor air quality improvement project.
Yeah. As well as the funding to cover electrical, you don't need that, right?
No.
Yeah.
But that would be included.
Right, I think it would cover that umbrella.
It's.
When do you want to set that town?
It's coming up, I see before the next 48, like half hour, 4, 5 minutes.
All right, so, so the way my motion.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
I make, what?
Thank you.
It's a tough crowd, I'm telling you, we have two people here, it's tough. I make a motion to set a town meeting for the appropriation of 499,000 from the general fund to capital project. HWP HVAC improvements number 20-6206-015 for engineering.
I thought we were taking out the HVAC and put air quality.
I can change.
Okay, no, but I don't think you've done that.
No, that is what the account's calling.
It's what they count.
Yeah, that's why they call it that.
For engineering design costs of the Porter School indoor air quality improvement project.
A-Wing.
A-Wing. A-Wing. Design costs of the Porter School A-Wing indoor air quality improvement project, okay? Thank you. That was very smooth. It's time to go. We need a date to have this town meeting. Would you want us before the next four seconds? Maybe 18 here.
18.
Over here. Come here.
I'll be here. I'll be here.
Well, we have three, we have four here.
Well, you don't.
I don't know if I trust. We need these residents to promise to come back.
Yeah. They'll be here.
We need some residents.
Judy, you're here, right?
Maybe she'll help you.
I have a thing.
I'll be here.
That's 6:45.
Yes, please, earlier.
Set the town meeting April 18, 2023, at 6:45 PM. Medella Urban Conference Room, correct? Any discussion?
No.
Who's in favor?
Could I ask some questions? If we're waiting for a grant to be approved, why are we motioning to move monies, which is permanent, which is a permanent act?
It's not permanent.
So you can move it back if we get a grant?
Because there's.
We also can move it back.
I just want, I just want you guys to look.
You'd have, I can go to a town.
What?
You'd have to have a town.
Or vote, can't remember who's gonna come, but. You know, I would just be concerned about waiting for that.
Time is of the essence in this project.
Yeah.
Because the upgrades have to happen in the summer, which is a month away.
So as long as that's.
We're running out of time.
As long as that's discussed, and we don't know when we're getting improvement.
No, they won't tell us.
No, why don't they? But they, we have to get a 45%. It has to be funded 45% from the grant in order for us to do this project.
My last question.
Find out why we have to work on it. Regardless.
And. When you say, can I ask a question, I didn't say no, but that's all right. We'll, we'll get it. Because it ends up being a discussion, I can't let the meeting get away, but it's okay, because we have another one coming up.
I want to.
If you can try it again. Try again. All right, here we go. Are we all set with that, and voted?
Yeah.
Did you vote?
I think you did, did you vote?
No, we didn't, no, we said, any discussion? Any more discussion? All those in favor, no, we have a discussion?
No, let's bring it up with the next one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is a discussion, and to set a town meeting for the allocation of funds for a new 2223 capital project for the Columbia Board of Education. So I have no idea what this is about, but let's look at it. So they said they have to install additions and improvements to the speaker system in Horace Porter School as part of an increase of security measures. Looking for $19,000 to be able to, the word came down, and that they are having trouble with the system. They can't hear the words being passed, it's a security issue, should they need to.
Would you like me to talk?
Should please, Beth, tell me. But I see that Scott's on the line, but go ahead.
So, yeah, Scott can add to it, so there's certain areas of the school where there is no interconnect speaker system. And so when they have had lockdowns and things, nobody hears, can hear it. So staffers don't hear the message, so they don't know what's going on. So what they're doing is, they got a quote of about $19,000 to fix all areas in the school, so it's accessible to everybody here and what's going on in the school. They are going to apply for a grant, a security grant that will pay that lovely number, lovely number 51.29% reimbursement back to the town. So in order to get this going, funding for it, so they can start the process, the application is due at the end of the month. One of the things that's great about this security grant is it will allow us to go back, I remember it's 2013, and any other security upgrades that they have done, we can include it as part of this application. So right now, we're looking at, oh, I think over $100,000 is possibly that the town could receive $75,000 back from this project and other, and the one that prior years. So the Board of Ed motioned last night to pursue the grant and request a town to do a town meeting for the $19,000, they can get this taken care of, because it is a security, I think, issue relative to the staff and students.
Yeah, I agree, thank you, I agree, I don't understand how it's gotten to this point, just unless it just cut out this week, and we're just being told about it, I find it absolutely unsettling that they can't hear security communications throughout parts of the school, or 100% of the school, I mean, it's, it's on set, okay.
Yes. Would you like to talk about the other?
And then the second one is asbestos removal. Still asbestos? Yeah, sure, we talked about it.
So it's been found that there are, they found in four classrooms, I'm not exactly sure of the location.
A-Wing.
It might be A-Wing. But I am not positive, I know it's, there was 200, we're.
Scott, is it in the A-Wing?
Is he still on?
Yes.
Oh, there he is.
Top right.
So.
Yeah. Yes, I believe it is.
So it's the oldest part of the school, and it's been found that there are four, they're looking at five classrooms in part of the five. When they pulled up the carpet, there is asbestos tiles underneath the carpet. So of course it has to be abated, just like last time, and they'd like to get funding of about $38,000 to bring in the company right after school's out, to get this abatement to have taken care of. It takes about two weeks. The more delayed it is, the harder to get the company in. They also have to replace flooring, which they have, they're either gonna use their capital account, and they have money for that. So it is a $50,000 project, but you know, they need $38,000 just to get the paper. To set up another capital cap for that.
Thank you. Does this have to run off a bid?
I think they, the school has a different, well, but I know this is the same company they have used before. They have a different policy, but it is a town policy. So this is the same company that came in and abated last year, so they were just gonna use the same company again if the, if.
Where do they take that asbestos out? A-Wing? No.
It was the other wing, it was like the first row wing. There are four classrooms there, and it's all in the oldest part of the school, and whatever's been carpeted, and that's where they're finding.
They're taking carpet out and putting floor down, they're not putting carpet back, aren't they?
I'm not sure, Scott, do you know what they're putting down on the floor?
They're replacing with tile.
Yeah. None.
It's disgusting.
So. What in the, what date would we like for this, the same date, same?
I recommend you do it all the same day.
10 minutes before.
So I had a question, the language of the referendum, is the 500,000 threshold in the aggregate? Because if that's the case, all of these combined exceed 500,000.
I don't know if it's per project, is it per project, or?
I mean, I'm looking at the charter here, it just says any appropriation, so it could be construed many ways. I would think you wouldn't want it where you could put a bunch of things on there, which in the aggregate exceeds that, and kind of get away from that value. So I think we either change the value, or maybe do a different date. But once we know for sure, it's not gonna trigger.
You could change the first.
Want to lower.
450.
No, because this is 57, so I'd have to change it to 442.9.
440.
440. Yeah.
440.
I mean, honestly.
Yeah. I think we have the town meeting, I'm doing both, I think that they're separate allocations, and so it doesn't trigger the emergency, but it can just be under 500.
Yeah. We'll work on 440.
It's a start.
He said, he thinks 499 is one, 58 is another, that's what he said.
Oh, is that what you're saying?
It's a separate appropriation.
Is it saying, it says per appropriation?
It says, after being recommended, Board of Selectmen, we have a reasonable discussion at a town meeting, and the appropriation or any authorization for issuance of bonds, notes, or other power with more than 500,000.
Oh.
Well, any appropriation or authorization.
There's separate appropriations and separate authorizations, you have separate things at the meeting.
You can have two motions, sorry, two motions, Joe. Two separate functions.
Okay. Okay. So I make a motion to set a town meeting for April 18. I would say, to include in the town meeting on April 18, 6:45 PM. The meeting for appropriation of $57,000 from the general fund for the following board of education group projects. Capital. Number HW Porter Security Project 206206012, $19,000 to install additions and improvements to the speaker system at the Horace Porter School as part of an increase of security measures. And number two, for capital project HW Porter asbestos removal 20-6206-028, $38,000 for asbestos abatement in four classrooms in Horace W Porter School.
So what, what times, the other one's gonna be?
6:45, the goal will be 6:45. With four selectmen following, first time.
Okay, they said enough time for 15.
If we can, we can go past seven.
I guess it does, right?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So I. 1.3, Connecticut Cycling Advancement Program, Friday, June 3rd. I move to approve the Connecticut Cycling Advancement Program Breakaway Benefit Ride from Columbia on June 3rd, 2023. Usually just go down near the.
Yes.
Or down the road, Lake Road, that kind of thing.
Meandering all through Columbia.
Yeah. It's not a.
Oh, this was the steeple, that used to be the steeple one.
Yeah, this is just.
This is different than the steeple.
Yes, it's different. Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Well, it's fine, who handles the security on this?
Good question.
Two support vehicles, all personnel will be there. Every lot, you know, every rider, Shane. Small groups of three to five riders, riders of single pilot formation. How did we get across 66?
66. 66 and 66. Six is, sixty-six isn't that under a bridge? Is that over there? Yeah, they're going on Flanders Road, that's common. Hundred twelve. It was under six.
Any discussion to share, or are we just looking at?
For being those.
And all those in favor of allowing it?
Alright.
I oppose, thank you. Turning around is the legal notice of town meetings, please sign. Uh, nothing for the lake. So appointments and resignations, Kara Vaughn, who is the accounting assistant, has completed her six-month probation. I move to remove Kara Vaughn from the six-month probation and place her as a full-time employee. Discussion, all those in favor?
Alright.
How's she doing?
Really good.
Yeah, how's she doing?
Good.
She's crossing the main.
I understand. Um, Mary Local has been involved in a Canadian research group. Quite a few members guided by meeting on, who's the head of the Waterfall Division of D, he's also resident of Columbia. Uh, this is an extensive study, which I'll take you tonight to read and we'll discuss it in more detail. But, um, just for tonight, Mary has asked, uh, to make sure the Board of Selectmen are okay with them doing an exploratory observation by kayak on the water behind, um, between Rec Park and, so it's ugly.
Utterly swamp.
Swamp. Um, for observational.
That's Joshua and Preston. Isn't that Joshua's?
Well. Ian, or did I see exactly?
Hi, Ian, would you like to weigh in on this, if you have any information?
But they said on town property of Columbia own, so.
Okay, so, yeah.
It's very unusual situation. That body of water has no invasions. And that body of water has no invasions. And to my knowledge, a boat of any kind has never been put in there. You say that, my son, and I, it's beautiful, by the big beaver, yeah. Yeah, it's beautiful back there. But how do you get a boat back there?
You don't, that's what she said. You have to drag, you have to drag it through the woods. So Ian, what they're asking to do is put a couple of kayaks in there and observe and stuff. And.
And go see. Wait, but did she say how she would get the kayaks there and where she would put them? Yeah, there's no way to get them. I mean, that's a long.
There's always a way to get them.
Oh, sure, but it's a long.
I don't know.
You, you, you have to put it in at sixty-six.
Who could?
You gotta get some waiters.
Tires cover some shells.
They never.
You actually can park up at Rec Park and walk down, dragging your kayak, pretty easily.
If you have your, yeah, if you had your, no, it's down and up.
Little wheels on the kayak.
They do make the kayak.
Yes, they do.
What is that called?
The Joshua's trust, is that?
Yeah, that's interesting.
I got this yesterday. I got this yesterday, and their meeting in Almac discusses more detail tomorrow.
So Mark, I think we should approve it, but make sure that they follow the same rules. Ask them to be on Utley Swamp as they do on Columbia Lake, okay? Each kayak is to be washed down, inspected, there's no, okay? Everybody good with that? They're looking, I mean, there's a lot of geese on the lake.
Do they need permission to do that?
Well.
Okay, so what they want to do is?
Pardon me?
It's up, Poppy.
No, but I mean, could the person do that?
You know what? If they're asking permission and we have the ability to put some restraints on it.
Okay, so they're looking to put, have, have, put kayak there to, to get an idea of what's going on, basically.
Right, you're looking to find out where the nests are.
For the geese.
For those geese.
But they're not at that point.
It will be.
The future discussion. We have to give permission for this.
Okay. Well, if town property, you know, yes, the town owns some of the bottom of, of that swamp. But so do a lot of other people, like Joshua's trust, Lena goes out there. And Jimmy Carr and Susan Williams and, you know.
I think we make a, a, more of a to-do than what they're looking to do. They're looking to look around, if they would you rather they went in with waiters and tried to look around over there? I, I, I don't. They wanna look around to find the geese nest, and I, I don't know. Connecticut, uh, the E P said we could add all the eggs, that would help. They, they said that in a meeting two years ago. What are they trying to do, Mark? Just get a look and see where they wanna see where the geese are, and then come back and add a strategy to the, the geese. Based on this whole study, which you can read in detail.
So, so they want, so if there's no, they can't find the nest, what else would?
They might not be able to.
What else would it help?
It would give an idea of what it's like out there, how they navigate back there. All we can do is so far, walk up to the beaver dams. Look over.
Well, the big, the big tall, long dam that's down inside, that's a good.
There's a small one in front of that. Ian, let me ask you a question. On Route sixty-six, I can't think of this. If somebody stopped on the side of the road, put a kayak on that pond and paddled around, staying in the middle of it. We have no say in that, right?
That's all Columbia.
Okay, so you know what? Paddle around, don't paddle around. I would rather have the strength saying, we'd like you to adhere to the late rules. They want to answer from our property.
On the north side.
That's good.
So they're saying that, I'm not, I'm just not sure why they.
Correspondent, do you have any more?
I do.
Sure.
Great.
Oh. Ian would like, the, in light of the Columbia Conservation Agricultural Commission, to know that E D C members and selectmen are invited to a informal session at the Becker Senior Center Wednesday, April nineteenth. Guest speaker is Joan Nichols, the executive director of the Connecticut Farm Bureau. She was speaking about farms and municipal options to allow agricultural property tax abatements. Columbia has approximately twenty-five farmers and the central element in the economic development, as well as the maintenance of our rural character. Helping them succeed in businesses of benefit to Columbia. So the E D C Commission and the Board of Selectmen will be formally invited to the April nineteenth, seven P M meeting, the Becker Senior Center.
How about that? Since there's your E D C right there. Yeah, yeah. Too good, so.
I'll try it out.
Okay, so we'll get, we'll get out. You have this from your memory, keep that in mind.
You know, it's funny, I just wanna say something. I was driving through town the other day, yesterday. And I was looking around and I thought to myself, for all that people we've accomplished, okay, not only us, those who came before us and stuff, but the changes, the services we provide, the, uh, you know, the additions to the recreational community that we have, and just all the things that we've done, it still looks like a farm town. It still has that rural character, so I.
I think this is a good idea.
Continue.
The, um, police report arrived today, it was all late, so officially being invited by PUP today. So this is, uh, we've had quite a few arrests, we're twenty, I mean, two DUIs, fifty traffic citations, fifty-four traffic warnings. And unfortunately, five accidents. We seem to constantly have five to seven accidents from our roads. Couple, pretty good.
Is it your resident, your first turn?
Yes, Justin.
Temporary.
Temporary, temporary, temporary resident. So they're interviewing for a full time position, so. Um. Also, I wanted to tell you that we just got notification from D O T that there'll be a Route sixty-six road closure. And it's, um, here's the map. They're actually putting a bridge in. It's a bridge. You know, you go, go over Matthews on the way to Long Mantic, and you go over the main bridge, there's another little bridge that they're replacing. Uh, but it's gonna require a, a drive around from Friday to it's from Friday, April twenty-first till
Monday.
Till Monday. Yeah, Friday to Monday. So it's a closure for the weekend, and unfortunately, that's Matthews' busiest day of the year, one of the five busiest.
They can close the road and put a bridge in over a heavily traveled road in three days. And they can't put a bridge on the, on the freeway down by, off of Flanders in four years.
You're still not even sure it's gonna, it's gonna work. And that's all I have.
Do they know that I can go?
Um, yes, they, I had discussions with D O T today. They're committing to putting up signage that the businesses are still open and putting up all the detours all around.
That's terrible.
I know, that's, that, that is a.
We'll put it on the website.
No, it's just no good way.
No, you're.
You'd have to go, actually.
It's a big word, right?
Jen, in the, in the, there's been some correspondence and stuff. There's been some correspondence and stuff. We are now a heart-saved community. We have enough people who took the, took the R course. And, uh, heart-saved community, that's good. We're also a whole community, so that's, it's really good.
So Beth and I are trained, if anyone looks down, we can grab that A D and save them.
We can call you.
No mouth-to-mouth required either. It's sort of, we're good.
Kara.
Oh, yes, Kara actually joined that heart-saving community. Yes, that was great. Kara, who is now a full-time employee.
Also, E O Smith captured her first aid title. You can see Mary working there. She, she, uh, coaches the team and does head hunting. So, uh, that's, it's quite an accomplishment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, she really is.
That's cool. What sport is that?
Basketball.
Yeah, and they're the large school, they're, it's, that's tough. Yeah, it's hard to do. Um. Transfers, no transfers. The refund, I move to approve the refund to nineteen dollars and fourteen cents. We've worked, as you for a refund, yes, it is. Also, help me. My road. For those in favor?
Alright.
Bill, Bill, Bills. I move to approve the payment of bills totaling five hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents. Consisting of twenty-two, twenty-three emergency, twenty-two, twenty-three regular, Saxton Delilah Library payments, number four, four, credit card, H S.
Well, it's good, the rescue, the truck.
Right.
And the breathing apparatus.
So is this, what payment on, is this on the squad?
It's the final one.
Did it come in, or above or below prime transport?
It's, the truck is here, I guess they're trying to get it all equipped now, and figuring that all out, but yeah. Um, I think there's, so basically, what we paid is seventy thousand from the sale of the truck. There was a balance, I think we had that door from appropriation, like less than twenty-five hundred, and the fire department reimbursed this balance. Thirty-five hundred dollars to reimburse it to the roll over.
Thank you to the fire department.
Midneuro facility assessment twenty-two, twenty-three, what's that?
That's our recycling.
Okay.
Trash.
Big part of that. Oh, that's the hazardous waste stuff.
We got all our self-contained breathing apparatus.
Yes, and I got, um, big thank yous that they're incredibly more comfortable than efficient than their previous breathing apparatus.
Well, that's great.
Yes, they do.
Is he, you know, who just got his interview? Yeah, looks like over. It should still be our whole, whole body, aren't we?
But luckily, we extended that contract. What if I should just shut up with the O P A, so? The rest of the gas.
Right, any more in discussion on the bills? All those in favor of paying the bills?
Alright.
Those, thank you. Are you interested? Hey.
You want to join the gases? Six, seven.
I usually see you all the day.
You see me here too, that's funny. Hi.
Very good. Okay, everybody, great. How about, uh, board comments?
I do have one. The one good thing that's come out of COVID has been that. I think it's very nice that we're hybrid and that people can go and watch it happen.
It is a big, big plus.
I, I like it a lot.
Well, I'm sick, I could still pretend.
See?
I mean. Chris.
Sure, and I'd like to give the fire department kudos. Uh, past couple of weeks, they've been offering CPR to residents' families. No costs, compression only, so it was and we attended and, uh, it's good.
Who's really well known?
Yeah, and he actually gets certified and everything, right?
I haven't gotten that.
Yes, it's different, you don't need to get breathing.
Well, right, I mean, they, yeah, they keep it all, but you see, that's the compression only.
Yeah, pretty good.
I do need to breathe. It's got a lot of good certificates.
Okay, Bill, anything?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not.
I agree with you, I like the bike.
Quick, get in the vehicle. It's too easy. Calm down. Actually, if you look around town, Hop River, the Department of Public Works has put in a, can we say that? Hop River Preserve, Hop River Preserve. Where we have the old.
Was that what the sign was for?
The, they put a nice road down into the meadow area, if people can go down there.
That's great.
Yeah, they put in a culvert and a, a road, and then they're going to do the parking lot next, once, um, we remove four trees and we order the guard rail after July one, when it's in the.
We're gonna remove four trees, we'll have an up room down there for three blankets, check that out. The rest is
three, one. Blankets, he's upset that the preserve is two-thirds of the property, the industrial historic preserve that we've cleared, whatever.
What's going on with the, of the lake with that pavilion?
Um, we've been having trouble finding architects. We have one coming Thursday to meet with us at Blastonbury. He's very excited to design the pavilion, so it should be pretty simple and quick. It doesn't seem like a real hard.
I mean, once they, yeah, once they design it, it should take you long to build it.
Jeffrey, you have a design?
No, we have a design that's no longer code. We have to have a code correct design now, because the way it was put together, it used to be just a porch platform, then we put a roof on it. But the way we did it, the overhangs were too much for. Then we put a roof on it, but the way we did it, the overhangs were too much for the trusses. So, that's been designed properly.
So, hopefully, so the other question, getting out the bathroom's going to be open at Red Park.
Yes, we have to turn the water off. But right now, there's plenty of porta-potties, but the water's about to come out.
When soon then?
When you promise me no more freezing stuff.
I promise you.
I know, two weeks.
I said, I said soon.
I said.
So, there, the other thing is if you get up to Red Park and you see the disc golf going in, apparently there was a ten-person working party last Thursday. There's a working party this Thursday, weather permitting. Uh, it looks like we may get that done this year.
And we have signs that are about to be approved for each hole, show where, where the courses.
That's what the poster meant to ask.
Well, the poster for the baskets. And the signs will be where you can throw them. The tee box. Yes, the tee box. And there'll be two throwing areas on each, two tee boxes, so that you can get tee balls. You just move twenty yards one way. It's a different view.
So, that's it. Nothing else? Everybody good?
Oh. Seven.
I make a make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
It's seven thirty.